Welcome to the Cupertino City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 18, 2023. I'm going to open the meeting at 6:47 PM. And if you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Fruin.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. Thank you. And I'd like City Attorney Jensen to report on the closed session, please.
There's nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney Jensen. I want to say happy birthday, Chris. Today is City Attorney Jensen's birthday. Oh, his wife's birthday. I'm so sorry. Your wife's birthday. Happy birthday, Chris's wife. And he's spending here time with us, so thank you. I thought it was your birthday. Okay, so postponement in order of the day. There's no ceremonial items, so any postponement or order of day today?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Then let's go to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is for persons who wishing to address the City Council on any matters within the jurisdiction of the city but not on the agenda for discussion, including information items. Do we have any cards, Madam City Clerk? Or hands raised on Zoom?
So I have a number of cards in front of me, but I need to go through them. If, with your permission, I'd like to start with Zoom.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have one hand raised. Aram James. Anyone wishing to speak under oral communications, please have a speaker card submitted in the next nine minutes, or your hand raised on Zoom. Welcome, Aram.
Thank you. You know, we've had a lot of -- I normally speak because I'm a Palo Alto resident in Palo Alto, but we've had a lot of people, including at least one gentleman from Cupertino who's spoke consistently, at least twice, in opposition to Senate Bill 403. Now, I can't understand why anyone would do that.
Sir.
I'm sorry?
Yes. Sir, this is oral communications reserved for items that are not on the agenda. SB -- the item that you're wishing to speak on is item 13, so it will be discussed later on in the evening.
Okay, well, then I will wait till that time, but I would like to speak generally then. I wanted to bring your attention to a bill that did not pass this year, and that was AB 742. And I was extremely active in that bill, and I didn't get to speak in front of your council about it, but Assembly Bill 4 -- I'm sorry, 742 was sponsored by Assemblyman Dr. Corey Jackson out of Riverside County, and the bill would have prohibited -- it didn't pass, but it was the first time in the history of the United States that such a bill was even proposed. And we're hoping that it'll come back next year. But this bill would have prevented police canines. And by the way, police canines are the most likely use of police force to send you to the hospital in this country, and that was documented in a Pulitzer Prize 13-part series by the Marshall Project called "Maul." And it documented how vile and how much we've looked the other way on police forces using canines. And I understand in your city, it's the Sheriff's Department, and I, you know, talked during the debates for sheriff, and I know that Bob Johnson at one point said that they didn't want to have canines in the Sheriff's Department, but they do. They have vile police canines that attack human beings. They bite the groin, the head, the face, and a former member of the Sheriff's Department who also ran for sheriff, Sean Allen, the first black African-American person to run for sheriff in this county, spent 24 years in the jail, and he saw over 200 dog bites during the years -- 24 years that he spent in the jail. And these bites were always disproportionately black and brown people. Some of the bites resembled shark bites, et cetera. So I want to bring to your attention the possibility that best police practices and for our sheriff would be no police canines except the search for human beings or for the bomb detection, but not to bite human beings. But I hope you'll listen and pay attention to this argument in the future.
Thank you, sir. That is your time. And next, we have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. I just want to mention and remind that there are big issues with the current city's -- city's current ordinance for residential balconies and privacy screening. And this has been brought up for years. A previous planning commission, who included David Phong, Stephen Scharf, and others, some that are still on commission, decided that, yes, it was a good time and should have been previously done to reevaluate those ordinances because residents often appeal projects because of those things, and the ordinances are not good. They're poorly written. They don't include some simple information that they should include, and they have bad tree species, et cetera, et cetera. And actually, Mayor Way and Councilmember Moore, I met with you two years ago in October, it'll be two years ago, and had this discussion. And I know that Councilmember Moore was agreeing with a lot of what was brought up by me and many other residents in these City Council and Planning Commission meetings over years. And Mayor Way, you seem to think it was nothing to worry about. And I'm clear -- not clear to this day why that is. I'm concerned because I believe it's officially on work program. It may not be a funded item, but I think it finally got on the work program, and I just think it needs to be bumped up in importance, especially with all the housing bills and the increase in density that's expected. These things become more and more important, and they're not being addressed. And there's absolutely zero reason they shouldn't be. And I'm concerned that City Council meetings are taking the place, or for some reason, so many Planning Commission meetings have been canceled. And Planning Commission should really be talking about this first in order for it to come to you. But if they don't have meetings, and they don't have it on their agendas, which they have in the past and it should be, it's not going to happen. And it really, really needs to happen. And I feel like other things are being heard over this, and this is not just me. I just happen to be one of the more vocal voices. But it's a problem that needs to be addressed, and I'm really disappointed that it hasn't been yet.
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor, we have two speakers in Community Hall. First is Jennifer Griffin. Second is Brooke Ezit. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hello, hello. Hi, good evening, City Council. I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I wanted to talk for a minute about Senate Bill 423, SB 423. This is the bill that extends SB 35, involves the labor unions, and somehow is involving the Coastal Commission. I'm very, very concerned that this bill, which just went through the Natural Resources Committee last week and has gone into appropriations, that it is unconstitutional in the state. It is trying to take out the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission was brought about in 1974, '75 by a citizen-led initiative, which we voted on, and that established the Coastal Commission in 1976. I remember this because my parents and neighbors were quite involved in this. What I am concerned about is that we have several elected legislators and some other groups that have decided that the sovereignty of the Coastal Commission needs to be overridden. And I see that as illegal. If you're going to take down the Coastal Commission, it requires a vote of the people of California who put it in there. I spoke to one of the people, representative who is on the governance -- sorry, the Resources Committee that this bill just went through, and she said, "We don't know if it's illegal or not. It has to be fought out in court." Now, to me, what is to prevent -- we don't know why the legislators decided to back this. We don't know what groups decided to do this. None of them are trained in CQAW. They do not have background in environmental training. They do not understand what happens in the coast. We don't know who these people are. When you have groups like this and legislators, they could say something like, "Children aren't allowed to go to school anymore." Now, would we accept that in California? I don't think that would go down well. So why are we allowing unknown groups to tell us that we need to override the Coastal Commission? That is illogical. This bill is illegal. It is against the law, and we need to start speaking up and saying that. If they're going to take down the Coastal Commission, the state gets to vote on it. Now, I haven't heard no one say that. I understand the Coastal Commission is fighting this. It also sets the governor up for problems because he appoints the Coastal Commission. If he signs this bill, then he is in the wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And we have Louise Sedadi. And that is our final speaker, Mayor.
Hello. Good evening. It's a beautiful day in Cupertino. I think there are a lot of residents that want to speak tonight, so I will be short. I'm responding to a comment that was made last meeting, and something was said during an item that I thought was rather disrespectful and rude, and I mentioned it when I spoke about the item. And it was just a small item about changing a time of the next council meeting and something that normally would just take five, 10 minutes, dragged on for half an hour. And anyhow, so I made a comment about the need to be cordial and civil. And then another person, a resident that spoke, then complained that I spoke about this during the item. And so I am now talking during oral communications about cordiality and why I think it's very important, if any residents notice any disrespect or untruth, that they can speak during that item when that untruth or disrespect occurred. Because in October, there will be a meeting regarding the grand jury findings and the private investigator, independent private investigator findings regarding disrespect, and it will have consequences for the two council members that were cited in the grand jury communication sightings and private investigators investigation, which the city has to respond to. So in fairness to those two council members that were cited, and we all know who they are, if any communication occurs which is considered disrespectful or whatever the grand jury cited, it really would behoove the truth for people to say, "Hey, as a resident, I feel that, you know, that came across as very disrespectful." And I think then, when the October meeting happens, people aren't sitting there going, "Well, what? You know, why?" Whereas if you are written up at your company for something, and then you're giving no feedback, and then suddenly, six months later, you're whatever, a continued feedback is good. And so I will continue to speak up when I notice any disrespect. And if somebody calls me out for speaking that an item was spoken about in a disrespectful manner, but I only spoke about it for a sentence or two or three, then it will force me to go at length during oral communications. So there.
Thank you, Louise.
Thank you.
I'm very sorry, Mayor, but I neglected to call on Brooke Ezit. I announced her earlier, but I forgot to call on her. So, Brooke, I apologize.
I'm here to discuss two items, money and settlements. I really have a problem with the fact that the City Council sees fit to spend $43,000 on an investigation when the council has gutted the teen programs. I think a much better use of city funds would be to fund teen programs. Secondly, the City Council -- the city has spent $45,000 defending itself against the League of Women Voters lawsuit, which I view as being frivolous. That $45,000 should have been returned to the city to fund the teen programs. And finally, settlements. On May 9, after Councilmembers Moore and Chow recused themselves and exited the dais two hours, 45 minutes, and 35 seconds, Councilmember Fruin stated, "One thing I would like to share with you, Vice Mayor Moore, on this topic is that if this activity is happening here, I would think that it is reasonable to expect it is happening at those bodies." Now, I'm not a legal scholar, but that sounds to me remarkably like these people are guilty before they are able to prove themselves innocent. And furthermore, Council Fruin goes on to opine, "And I would direct you to the results of a settlement with the city's association between that agency and its executive director, which involved an $8,000 payout because of Liang Chow's behavior." Now, I went back and I Googled, and I did a records request, and I found that that particular legal kerfluffle did not -- was not a result of Liang Chow's behavior. It was the result of a dispute between the executive director and her employer about health coverage and also about whether that organization should be a JPA or continue to be a nonprofit. When I went and I looked through the settlements, what I found is that the city of San Jose, which I believe is Mr. Fruin's current employer, paid out $9,570 for that settlement, and the city of Cupertino spent $8,000 as a result of that settlement. Ms. Jordan's attorney put in a demand letter requesting $441,000 and settled for $180,000, of which $8,000 was the city of Cupertino's responsibility. I hope that people will realize that settlements are not a conviction. They're not an acknowledgement of guilt. What they are is people wanting to settle their differences and move on because they don't have the resources, either mentally or financially, to deal with some of this legal nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'm going to close the public comments session and I want the oral communication session. I want to thank all the people who come and make comments. They care about our city affairs. That's why they're here. So thank you for making any oral communications. Now, I'm going to move on to, let's see, the Consent Calendar, which is items 2 to 9. Do we have any consent calendars being pulled?
No, Mayor Way.
Okay. If not, I would like to open up for public comments on Consent Calendar number 2 to 9. Do we have cards or hands raised?
Yes, Mayor, we have one request to speak in Community Hall from Jennifer Griffin. Jennifer, would you like to speak on number 9?
I need to hire a secretary.
Jennifer, I believe you also want to speak on number 4, 4 and 9.
Okay, all right. Do you want me to start with 4?
It's up to you.
Or the Cristo Rey. Okay.
4 and 9 is what you have.
Okay, I'll start with 9, since I -- this one, I'm really glad -- my husband and I go up to the cemetery on Cristo Rey all the time because his father is buried there in the veterans section, and we go at least two to three times a month. It's a lovely area. I have noticed that many people are riding their bikes along the narrow road, and there are no bike lanes. We have wondered for many, many years why there were no bike lanes going up to the Circle and to Rancho San Antonio Park and to the Forum back there. I think this is a good use of the money. I'm not sure how this affects the parking in the area because you do have a lot of homes in there. And I just was wondering if you all could talk about the roundabout. Now, I know roundabouts are used in Europe a lot. I'm still getting used to them. They kind of scare me. But how do you handle the bike lanes when you get to the roundabout? Because that is a very busy roundabout. It looks like -- the sign looks like a turtle to me whenever we come up there. And one of the other things that's sort of dangerous is that one of the walking trails from Rancho San Antonio comes down, and it's right at the entrance to the Gate of Heaven Cemetery, where the gate is. And we always have to look to the right to make sure that we don't hit a pedestrian or -- I don't know if you can ride a bike in there. But if you all are going to be using money to kind of rework that area, you might want to think about looking at that traffic circle because I think it's too small to handle the amount of traffic there. Plus, when people are walking, they get confused about how to actually cross it. So I think maybe we need to either eliminate the traffic circle, make it bigger, or try to have better instructions about how to deal with it. I even, one time, we stopped because there were pedestrians that walked by, and a wild turkey followed them across the crosswalk, which I thought was really cute. But anyway, if you all could take a look at that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Jennifer, did you want to speak on 4? Oh, well, actually, your time is -- video, did she have?
I am so old, okay? Sorry.
I think she had a minute left video.
Okay. Did I -- yeah, I wasn't sure how that worked. So this was the lobbying one. I'm -- you know, there's constant lobbying stuff going on, and I think we need to be really clear about what the definition of lobbying is because we hear it in the news all the time. And I think that once we -- okay, so we made the lobbying ordinance two years ago. I was there. Then we're already changing it. So I suspect that the nomenclature and definition of what a lobbyist is, who registers, et cetera, is going to change constantly in Cupertino. This is not the last iteration of it. We're going to have -- we need to be -- we need to realize that this is something that will be constantly modified, so if it comes up again, don't be surprised. Lobbying is a very, very important thing, but we need to monitor it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mayor, that is -- oh, I do see a hand raised on Zoom now by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, staff. I want to speak to the second reading of the lobbying ordinance. There was a lot of discussion about what the state, you know, conforming to the state, whether we were, yada, yada. When I glanced at the state law, it looked to me like the $5,000 included travel expenses. And also, there was -- it looked like a difference between the $5,000, and then there was a contract lobbyist that was a $2,000 limit. But anyway, I just want to put that out there that if we revisit this one day, that I really think that the expenses should be included in the limit because the limit is so high that you've set. And $5,000 every quarter is a lot of money. It ought to include the travel expenses. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And we now have Lisa Warren with her hand raised, so I will call on Lisa. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So I wasn't able to attend the last meeting either on Zoom or person, but when this lobbying ordinance came up and there was a big discussion with the League of Women's Voters, and I just am very curious because I have not seen nor heard of any other city that our original ordinance that was being challenged was taken from other cities, surrounding cities. I've seen no indication that League of Women Voters has taken the same step to sue the city, the other cities. And I'm very curious about that. And if I'm wrong, it didn't make the news like we did, and I'm wondering why. I also, with respect to the people who are lobbyists and are actually doing the right thing and registering, I would like to thank -- I can't recall all the names right now. There's so few. But I do know Amy Chan has registered repeatedly because she should, and she does, and the same with Jim Kanina and his company. So I am grateful for that. I just wish there weren't so many people afraid to let people know that they were lobbyists. It shines a very strange light, especially if our city was the only one targeted with the same basic ordinance. So, thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. And Mayor, that is our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I am going to close the public comment for Consent Calendar 2 to 9, and I'm open up for council discussion, if not a motion and a second. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve the Consent Calendar, items 2 through 9.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
So it's being made. Motion and seconded. Any further discussions? If not, let's vote by light.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now, we're moving into the next session, which is public hearing. We have two public hearings. We're moving to item number 10 first. I'm going to open the public hearing for item number 10. Hearing to consider approval of lien assessment and collection of fees on private parcels resulting from abatement of public nuisance weeds and/or brush for the annual weed and brush abatement programs and accompanying budget appropriation request. May I have staff report, please?
Mayor Way, City Clerk will give a short presentation.
Yes, I am just going to pull up my slides. Actually, just one moment. My presentation crashed. Sorry, I have to go into my folder. Okay. Okay, I will just show my screen. And are you seeing my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so it will not go into presentation mode. Okay, so I'm going to leave it in this view because it's not going into presentation mode. So, okay, the -- just a quick overview. The lien assessment and collection process includes both the weed and brush abatement programs. Only properties that have failed to meet the requirements are assessed. Tonight's hearing requests consideration of a resolution confirming assessments on properties for unpaid abatement services. If approved, the total charges are included on the property owner tax bill. Owners may request council remove their property from the assessment list. Any waived fees will be billed to the city. Charges include any work performed by a county contractor as well as county administrative fees. These are the county fees for the 2023 season. Every property in the program receives an initial inspection to determine if the property has abated. The inspection fee this year is $92. Per the current city process, the owner is only charged if a property fails the initial inspection. The city covers the charged if a property fails the initial inspection. The city covers the cost for any parcels that have passed inspections. The administrative fee of $519 is charged for properties that fail the initial inspection and must be re-inspected. An administrative fee of $891 is charged if weed and/or brush removal is completed by the county's contractor. This fee is in addition to the costs to remove the weeds and brush. And the county contractor work, abatement work prices vary depending on the type of work that is completed. Just a bit on the supplemental process for past inspections, where the city pays the fee for properties that pass the initial inspection. This applies to the weed abatement program only. It was adopted by council on, it was approved by council on November 2, 2020, as well as a budget appropriation of $8,886, which is authorized to fund these costs. The city will pay the initial inspection cost if the property passes the initial inspection by the April 30 deadline. On December 13, 2022, the city mailed a letter outlining these, this process to all of the property owners that are on the program list. So on July 6, the county filed the assessment report of all costs associated with abatement. On July 7, that report was mailed to every property owner that was on the list as well as tonight's hearing notice. There are 36 parcels on the assessment list. This hearing will only consider approval of lien assessment and collection of fees on those properties that did not pass the initial inspection and incurred costs for the county to abate the nuisance. This year, 81 properties were found to be compliant as listed in the past inspection report, in the staff report. The inspection costs will be paid by the city and those properties are not included for consideration at this hearing. I just want to mention a typo that is on the agenda for the payment to be, for the city payment is actually $7,252 as listed here, not $7,254 as listed in the, as contained in the agenda. So it's a $2 difference, but wanted to mention it. And so the action before you is to conduct the hearing to consider objections from property owners that are listed on the assessment report. And if council wishes to adopt resolution number 23-093 approving the lien assessment and collection of fees for weeds and brush to allow the county to recover the cost of abatement. And lastly, approve the budget appropriations of $7,492 in the general fund.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'm going to open for council question before public comments. Any questions from the council? If not, I'll open up a public comments.
So I see one hand raised on Zoom from Pawan Kumar. Welcome, Pawan. You'll need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi, yeah. My name is Pawan Kumar. I'm from Sacramento. Dear, uh, Republican Council, I'm here to express my support for SB 403 and-
Uh, sir, actually, this is for the item number 10, which is weed abatement lien assessment. The item that you wish to speak on is number 13, which will be heard later on in the agenda.
All right, all right. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. So Mayor, I do not have any cards or I do not see any requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. I will close the public comments on this hearing. And does council have any questions? If not, I'll close the public comment first before the motion, right? City councils.
You, you could close the public hearing now, Mayor.
I'm going to close the public hearing and come back to council for a motion and a second, please. Uh, council member Moore?
I move the recommended action.
And council member-
Second.
Frun seconded. Motion by council member Moore and seconded by council member Frun. If there's no discussions, let's vote by light.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'm going to item number 11 and open the public hearing for item number 11. Fiscal year 2023-2024 Fee Schedule Update. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, we do. We're getting ready for the presentation by Director Alfaro and our newest, newest addition to the administrative services department. Are we ready to go?
I think we just need IT to put the presentation up on the screen. And then you put it in presentation mode. And I will hand it promptly over to Jonathan Odo-Skoll, our finance manager, to go over a brief presentation.
Good evening, honorable mayor, way, and council members. Tonight, we will be presenting the fiscal year 2324 Proposed Fee Schedule Update. On the agenda, I will be providing some background, including defining a fee, fee schedules for city services, and the methodology for increasing the fees, followed by fee rates, the new fees, fiscal impact, and staff As defined by the city's 2016 fee study, a user fee is a fee or rate charged to an individual or group that receives a private benefit from services provided by the city. The city has five fee schedules. Schedule A, general fees, includes fees not specific to a department or division that would require a dedicated schedule such as code enforcement permits, false alarms, city clerk services, and others. Schedule B, engineering fees. This schedule covers fees necessary for the engineering division within the Public Works Department to review plans and applications for private developments, which includes design and inspections. Schedules, excuse me. Schedule C, planning fees. This schedule is utilized by the Planning Division, which administers all requires review and evaluation processes for proposed land use projects and maintains the goals and objectives of the city's general plan and zoning ordinance. Schedule D, building fees. This schedule is utilized by the planning, sorry, by the Building Division of the Community Development Department and covers general building, construction, construction plan check, and building code enforcement. And lastly, the schedule E, parks and recreation fees. This schedule is utilized by the Recreation Services Department, which organizes, markets, and oversees recreation and leisure services in a variety of programs. The city's fees are set through a comprehensive fee study conducted approximately every seven years, with the last completed study occurring in 2016. The city is currently in the process of another study, which will be presented to council later this year. Between the fee studies, the city updates the fees using either the Bay Area Consumer Price Index for All Urban Consumers, or CPI, Construction Cost Index, or CCI, or Estimated Budgeted Labor Costs. For fiscal year 2324, the CPI increased by 5.3%, the CCI increased by 7.1%, and the estimated labor cost increased by 9%. I will note that the 9% labor cost increase reflects two years' worth of labor changes. As last year, the city was in the process of labor negotiations and the budget had not been finalized when the fee update was presented to council. Included in the 9%, the fiscal year 2223's 5% cost of living adjustment, estimated payroll increases for CalPERS reports, and approximately a 1% increase for employees progressing into a higher salary step. This slide provides historical changes and escalators by schedules. As you can see, Schedule A is adjusted by CPI. Schedule B is adjusted by CCI and Estimated Labor Cost. Schedule C is updated by CPI and Estimated Labor Cost. And Schedule D is adjusted by Estimated Labor Cost. Schedule E is not included as this schedule is market-driven by similar services offered by other providers and other governmental agencies. We now move on to new and noteworthy changes. Schedule A would take effect July 19, and staff proposes to include a commemorative bench fee at $5,000. Schedules B and C have an effective date of September 17 to confirm with minimum state law requirements, whereas Schedule D would take effect July 19. And all three schedules do not have any new fees or noteworthy changes. Schedule E would take effect July 19, and the staff is proposing the removal of the teen center from the schedule due to the permanent closure, and updating the security staffing rate to 43% to align with the pass-through costs with contracted rate increases for the fiscal year. Onto the fiscal impact of the proposed fee schedule updates. Based on the three-year historical average, the general fund revenues are estimated to increase by approximately $550,000, while the enterprise funds will increase by approximately $300. The table shows, shown separates the estimated increases by schedule and funds. At this time, staff is recommending the adoption of resolution approving fiscal year 2324 fiscal fee schedules A, D, and E effective July 19, 2023, and schedules B and C effective September 17, 2023. This ends my presentation, and I am available for questions.
Thank you, Finance Manager Orosko. Did I say it correctly?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm opening up for council questions. Council member Frun, or council member Moore? Oh, I don't have lights on, either one of you. No questions? Council member Moore?
Okay, just a quick, kind of a scheduling question. So we've got this report that's going to come to council sometime in the fall regarding the fees that we have. When would we anticipate making adjustments to this schedule, once we've gotten that information?
Through to Mayor, I could take that question for Director Alfaro. So, council member Moore, if I understand you, you're talking about the second fee, the potential fee schedule update that will be brought to council. We don't have that clarity from the consultant right now. So we're hoping that the study will finish before the end of the year. So if it's earlier, we can bring it back to council for adoption sooner. Right now, the anticipated schedule is either December, if not January of next year.
Okay. And then, so we're going to, this will be for the following year, this adjustment that we're making right now. This will be for the, for the full year. We're not going to readjust it halfway through.
No, no, you're absolutely right.
Okay, thank you.
Is it member Frun?
So with, with respect to that same fee study, are we planning to harmonize that with our housing element analysis in terms of constraints on development?
Through to Chair, yes, we are. And I've double-checked with the Community Development Department, and there isn't any potential constraint on the housing production.
Do you have any more questions before I open to public comment? Vice Mayor Mohan?
Yeah, I had one question. In, in Schedule C, there's a 9% labor cost that's been applied to all fees in Schedule C, except for the housing mitigation in Luffy. And I wondered why that was not adjusted. I, I didn't see an explanation for it.
So there were- Would, would, would you like me to answer that question? Thanks. Yeah, so the, so the housing, the affordable housing mitigation fee is an impact fee. Its level is set by a separate NEXUS study, which is a different process than was used for this fee schedule update.
And, and when will that happen?
It's not, not agendized now. I mean, it's something that council would, would, I would recommend prioritizing through the work program if you, if you would like staff to look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no more questions, I'd like to open up a public comment, please. Do we have any cards or hands raised?
Yes, Mayor, I have one request to speak in Community Hall, and I see two hands raised on Zoom. In Community Hall, we have Don Halsey. Welcome, Don.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, honorable council persons, people in the staff, et cetera. I'm here to talk about, of all things, the golf course. But fees on the golf course, that's today's topic. We use a low-tech approach here.
Point of order.
I'm sorry.
Point of order, Mayor. I would remind the audience that we have a speaker and, and to give him the, the floor while he's speaking.
Thank you. Just, just so that we have a speaker attention, so let's, you know, pay attention to the speaker. Thank you.
Continue.
Yes, please.
Okay. So that's what I'm going to talk about. Give you some fresh news. These are the fees on the golf course. As of this afternoon, I went right down there. There's a bunch of numbers here. I expect you to memorize them all because there will be a test in about 10 seconds. Here's the test. These are the fees proposed to take effect tomorrow that you're voting on right now. Okay? So thanks for that. Over here in the yellow square, these are the fees that were there last year. And those of you with a photographic memory will say, ha ha, it's the same ones. So, okay, fine. That jibes. And these, in white, are what's proposed for tomorrow. And if a sharp eye will discern that there is no difference. So no change proposed. I'll just say hmm about that. We heard earlier that we don't look at CPI because all this stuff is market-driven. So I'm going to give you info on that. This was actually presented back in September. Here's Blackberry Farm. I'm using the non-resident fee of $18 compared to a similar non-resident fee at Sunken Gardens. And those of you who don't play golf may not be able to relate this, but these are very similar golf courses, and you might want to expect to pay about the same, okay? And, but Sunken Gardens, which is publicly owned, may charge 28% more and seem to make a go of it. You could say, what about Prun Ridge? Yeah, of course, here's right down in San Jose, another nine-hole golf course. Again, it's similar to what we've got at Blackberry Farm, and they charge 22% more. I will not talk about Deep Cliff, 40-plus percent more, but they're not public. We'll just go apples to apples here. So if we're going to be market-driven, I would say you've got a gap there. If you went and said, let's just go a little short of the 28, the 20, let's just go with 20%, you know? If you did that, the, the projections from the city showed overall a 20, 25 years, a $10 million loss. If you boosted the fees by 20%, you'd get another 1.8 million, and that would be $75,000 a year. You could make a decision to say, we're going to boost those fees looking at the market. And I think that's an opportunity for the Cupertino City Council to say, yes, this budget issue is serious. We're taking it serious.
That is your time. Thank you, Don. Now we will move to Zoom, Mayor. We have Peggy Griffin and Lisa Warren. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council and staff. I want to second what Don Halsey just said. I, there is no excuse for not upping the fees for the Blackberry Farm Golf Course. It has been repeatedly pointed out that the fees are too low. So I encourage you to make an exception, do your resolution, but say that these fees need to go up. Also, I have two other issues. In the staff report, page 4, 6, it recommends that increases to parkland dedication and transportation impact fees be deferred to allow for further review. When does the staff anticipate bringing this back to council? My concern is twofold. Projects are continually being submitted, and the longer the delay, the more our city will be impacted by the inability to charge the adequate fees to cover the costs at a time when our finances are stretched. Once this comes to council, it is approved, Schedule B fees, it takes 60 days after adoption. That's an additional two-month delay from the time it comes to council and you pass it. Please set a no later mandate for bringing this back to council. Also prioritize this work so that when it does return, it comes more quickly, as soon as it can. Delays will impact the city's finances. I question the statement in the staff report that there are no fiscal impacts because this, this proposed delay does- this proposed delay does impact the city. Second issue, or third, if you count the Blackberry Farm, is one of the fees that shows up every year on our property tax bill is the parcel tax slash special assessments area is storm water drain fee. And maybe I'm looking in the wrong place, but I can't find it in Schedule B. Maybe it's not supposed to be there, but I'd like to know. I'm trying to find out if my taxes as a resident are going to go up, even if I don't remodel or do anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa. Okay, go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, thank you. So once again, thank you, Peggy, for all the good information and the research that goes behind it, and as well as for Don Halsey, whom I was going to, I raise my hand to echo what he's saying and add that on the open houses where people walked the course with staff and potentially consultant, too, I think, maybe, I was at some of these things, and there was always, "Why didn't we raise the price? Why didn't we raise the price?" And that was coming mostly from people who golfed there on a regular basis. There's no reason not to, for all the reasons that Don said, and just knowing that your population who was interested in this whole subject is not opposed to it, at least the people I've heard. So please consider that. I think that's it. Thank...
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor, that's our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And we're going to close the public comment area and then bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Feng, and followed by Councilmember Chow.
So if you could actually opine on the issue of the fees for the golf course, that would be helpful. Is there a particular methodology used to arrive at the no change, or what else is driving that?
Yes, so we met with the Parks and Recreation Department and discussed the ability to either raise the fees now or wait for the fee study that should be comprehensive, looking at all their fees all together at once, and we felt it would be most prudent to wait for the fee study to come forward, to look at everything holistically at once.
Just to follow that question, so that would be looking at maybe a fee adjustment in about a year, right?
Correct, with the recommendation coming to council, you know, December, January timeframe, and then that fee, that fee could go into effect earlier if council chose. If not, it could go into effect in July 1st.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chow?
So I remember last year already, we were told that we are not increasing the golf course fee at that time, because we are going to do some study. And now, a year later, with all the price increase everywhere, we are still not increasing the fees. So I'm just wondering if we decide, for example, that, because this is an issue that has been brought up many times, so if we decide, maybe we increase the resident fee by 10%, non-resident fee by 20%, is it possible that to make that decision today? Or do we need require, do we need more study for, before the council make that decision?
I believe we can do that today. I just want to double-check with City Attorney, because I've noticed, and if that's still allowable, to increase the rates for Blackberry Farm.
We would have to renotice the item, yes.
So we would need to come, we have to do it in the next meeting.
Yeah, I would recommend that. I mean, I could take a look at it, but I don't want to, look, I won't be able to give you an answer on the noticing requirements now.
Can we adopt the virgin today and then revise the golf course fee in another meeting?
That could always come back as a separate agenda item, yes.
Okay, great. And then another question brought up by the public, also, the staff report reads, "Public Works Department continues to evaluate parkland dedication and transportation impact fees for fiscal year 2023-24. It is recommended that increases to parkland dedication and transportation impact fees be deferred to allow for further review of potential fee increases." So I'm curious, what's the reason that further review is required? And then, yeah, like was mentioned, when do we expect that to come back? Because as we know, parkland dedication and transportation impact fees could make millions dollar difference for a large project.
Yeah, you know, the reasons for the two fees are a little bit different. With respect to the parkland fees, it, you know, we don't really have solid basis for increasing them at this point. With respect to the transportation impact fee, we really need to do further study based on some changes since that fee was last set before increasing the fees. So those are, they're different reasons, but at this point, I would not recommend increasing either of those fees for a number of reasons.
So my understanding is for these two fees, we would need to do a NEXUS study to understand the impact of a development project on parkland or traffic, and then we set the fee. So when was the last NEXUS study done?
Well, so there are a little bit different processes for the two fees. So for the transportation impact fee, I believe the last NEXUS study was done in around 2017, and that you do need to do a NEXUS study to make sure that those fees are set correctly. The parkland dedication is a bit different. It's done via appraisal, and I believe that's done annually. Our Public Works Director can jump in and correct me if that's not true.
So then, do those fees also automatically have an annual increase, or are they just not changed since 2017?
No, there have been past, there have been increases in those fees since 2017.
So there is an automatic annual increase by CPI?
So the parkland dedication fee is tied to the cost of land in the city. The transportation impact fee, I believe it's tied to construction cost index rather than CPI.
And, okay, so construction cost has increased dramatically since 2017?
That's correct, yeah.
So do we plan to do a NEXUS study soon?
It's something that we are discussing at the staff level. You know, if council could certainly prioritize that by putting it on the work program. But it's something that, independent of that, we are discussing the need of the staff.
But the parkland fee is done annually, because we get an annual assessment report from the county?
No, we do an appraisal. The Public Works Department does an annual appraisal to evaluate that fee.
Is that a requirement by any municipal code to do an annual appraisal?
It's a requirement of the Quimby Act, the state law that authorizes the fee, that the fees be, you know, have, you know, bear a reasonable relationship to the cost of acquiring property for parks.
That's really good to know. So those are the reasons that they are not updated together with these fees. So it might be, it would be nice if this is made clear in the staff report, so the public understand the reasons of not updating those. Thank you for the explanation.
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Yes, I'm kind of wondering, looking at the Schedule E, Blackberry Farm Golf Course, if we are to pull out the golf fees, is that something that we could see on the 25th, or are we going to have to wait later on that? And then there's a number of fees associated with it beyond just the 16 and the $18 that we were looking at. There was a whole other table. So what is the request that we would be making? Because we would, if we are going to approve all of the fees, we're just going to say, you know, our motion is going to be to approve the recommended action less all of the golf fees, and then you can look at the tables and see if there's something that we can simply add to, because Councilmember Chow's suggestion is to do the 10% increase on residential and the 20% on non-residential. So if you have some suggestions on how we can do that, I'd appreciate it.
So through to Mayor, I think, I don't know if it's going to be feasible to bring it back next Tuesday, and considering that council is dark in August, we may be able to find a time to bring it back in September, October timeframe. However, we would definitely need to talk to the Parks and Recreation Director and also to figure out if this is feasible and have a determination. So maybe even the September timeframe might be a little late. I hate to commit to something that we may not be able to deliver.
So the question is, we can approve this, but we can bring back the item if we want to, right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. My other question is, if the council would like to prioritize the traffic NEXUS study, we can do that as a work plan, but we do have to work, look at the work plan, and some, something comes, something has to go.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chow, you don't have minutes. Let's have Councilmember Vice Mayor Mohan first.
I am ready to make a motion.
Oh.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes. Vice Mayor Mohan, please.
Yeah, this is for staff. The staff report says there's additional revenues of $550,000 that we will get as a result of these fee increases. So has that already been budgeted, or is that, is this like an unexpected windfall?
This would be the latter. It's not included in the budget. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Mohan, to make that clear.
I just wanted to add, they're estimates. Guaranteed, it depends who comes to pull, what fees they come to pay for which items that would drive that.
Thank you, Director Alfaro. Yes, that's good. So Councilmember Chow, you ready to make a motion? Should I close the public hearing?
Yes, you may, if nobody else has testimony.
I'm going to close the public hearing and go for a motion, please.
Okay, I move for the staff recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 23-094, and as stated, and in addition, we will bring the golf course fee increase back with a potentially 10% increase for residential and 20% for the non-residential. Of course, staff can recommend whatever is reasonable. And also, I would like that we prioritize the NEXUS study for the traffic impact fee, given that the construction cost has increased quite a lot since 2017. Thank you.
So I'd like to make a friendly amendment to just approve as recommended, but the fee increase on golf course and the traffic study be the future agenda items.
Yeah, that's future agenda item.
Right, but not incorporate into the motion. We will put on future agenda items. You can propose that I approve it, and I think that's a cleaner for hearing. I'm going to ask...
And usually, we just include all these...
This is a public hearing, so I'm going to ask City Attorney's opinion on this.
Yeah, I think that would be more consistent with what's agendized, but certainly, you know, what I'm hearing is that the, that Councilmember Chow is making a request for those be future agenda items, and the mayor is supporting those as being added to the future agenda items list. So if that's acceptable to you, then I would recommend going with Mayor Way's friendly amendment.
So I think I would like to still include that as part of the motion, but clarify that those two items are future agenda, future agenda items. This has been, I think, the practice of Cupertino Council, that we do include directions for two staff.
Right, but I'm recommending that you not do that, because it's not consistent with what's agendized under the Brown Act.
Okay.
So the motion is to approve as proposed? And I second that motion. We accept my friendly amendment, right?
So I will need to bring the future agenda item up again when the item comes up?
At the end of the meeting, we will do that.
I, no, well, I think we...
I don't believe that's how we do it.
Yeah, I think we can acknowledge the future agenda items without going through the process.
So I don't need to bring that up?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think that the city manager heard both of you request those as future agenda items.
So the meeting record would reflect that?
I've noted...
The council direction include a future agenda item?
Through to Mayor, if I may, I've noted the future agenda item to bring both the golf course fee and also the impact fees for, as a future agenda item. I've noted.
Okay, great, thank you. So the motion is only the staff recommendation?
Yes, and I second that. Any discussions? Moore?
Sure. Just really quick, there, I just want to point out that there are three pages on the Blackberry Farm golf course fees, PDF 376 through 3, it looks like 379, actually. No, 378. So there are a number of fees in here that would need to get looked at, so I hope that those are all going to come back to us. And I want to thank Don Halsey for bringing this up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore, and I'd like to add that Don actually is an avid golfer, so appreciate your, you know, giving us recommendations. So we have a motion in a second. If there's no discussions, let's vote by light.
The motion here is unanimous, Lee.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now we are moving into action item, which is Amber 9. Does the council need a break? Or we can do 9 and have a little break, because I think we're expecting 10 to go a little longer.
Do you mean item 12, Mayor? Item 12? I thought you mentioned...
Item 12, Mayor Way.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item 12, yes. We're going to, let's do finish item 12 first. Okay. So item 12 is, "Consider scheduling a council agenda item to update the fiscal year 23-25 city work program to include an item relating to the noise ordinance." This item, we're just looking at whether we want to proceed with the noise ordinance or not. It's not really a recommendation or work plan. So do we have a staff report?
Sure, Mayor Way. We don't have a presentation, but we do have a staff report included in the packet for today's meeting. Very quickly, to provide a background, you'll remember several meetings ago, there was a resident who resides on a residential property abutting a commercial property along Deans Boulevard. So he's come to council meeting during oral communication express interest in amending the city ordinance to further mitigate his problem. Staff has subsequently met with the resident a number of times, both myself and the Community Development Director, staff, and also, I believe, this Mayor Way and also a number of council members have met with this resident. So as Mayor Way suggested, this is to bring the item before council to decide if this is an item that will qualify as a city work program for the next two fiscal year. We have not done any evaluation to see how much and how long this work item would occur. If council decides to put it on the city work program, we can subsequently come back with that further analysis. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you, Mayor Way.
Thank you, City Manager. Do we have questions for City Manager? If not, I'll open up a public comment. Do we have any public comments?
Mayor, I see no hands raised on Zoom, nor do I see any speaker requests to speak in Community Hall.
I will close the public comments and come back for council discussion. I did bring this up, because I did notice that our noise ordinance haven't been really looked at for a long time, and this is what I, my concern is for the business that's really close to the residential area. Do we want to really, do we want to have a little different noise level of ordinance for this to be studied? But I don't know how long it's going to take to study and how much it's going to cost, so I'm asking my colleagues, do we really want to study this? If we do, then our staff will come back with how much it's going to cost, how long it's going to cost as a city, a work program, then we can decide whether we want to put it on a work plan or not. Today, what I'm asking is, do we really want to take a look at this?
Right, and then another point of clarification, Mayor Way, if I may, we would like to keep the consistency of the city work program, so as council makes a decision on adding this item to the work program... item to the work program, we will come back recommending to council to drop an item from the current work program as well.
This is good. And what I would like to know is first, how much and how long it's going to take, before I even consider whether that's going to be a work program to be prioritized or not. So any council discussions? Member Moore, please.
I just took a question for the city manager. Did we get balcony and screening onto the work plan? I don't think we did. And then the other question is, on that same note, did we get the sign ordinance on there as well? I don't think either of them made it.
Thudamayar, I don't believe the screening or balcony regulation is made it to the city work program. I do believe that the sign ordinance is on, but it's on the lower priority list.
Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
I apologize, I missed four hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so let's reopen the public comments.
Okay, great, we have four hands raised. Aram James, Srinidhi Belagundo, and Peggy Griffin and Lisa Warren. Welcome, Aram.
My apologies, I was waiting to speak on Item Number 13 to, you know, to talk about that. Thank, sorry.
Yes, thank you. So, Srinidhi? You'll need to unmute. Srinidhi?
Hi, did you wish to speak on this item? Okay, so they muted themselves again, so we'll go to Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. There are many, many items that were proposed and discussed as part of the 2023-25 city work program. The items that were decided were and are the highest priority to both residents and the council and the staff. And there are several of the city's ordinances that need to be addressed and reviewed, which the public has expressed frustration with multiple times during city meetings, such as balconies and decks, privacy screening, signage and lighting on signs, lighting indoor and out. I believe that adding this possible work item on a future agenda to possibly bump or place one of our 15 currently funded work plan items is not the best use of staff and council priorities and time. Just deciding to consider it at a future council meeting will take valuable staff time and resources away from existing projects at a time when only 15 items were funded. This also prioritizes one ordinance over several that I've already mentioned that people have multiply mentioned in many different meetings. If you consider this item, then you should also be considering the following items that many residents have expressed concerns over in the past: balconies, privacy screening, lighting, signage. I would suggest adding this noise ordinance review to the list of items to be considered next year, along with the other potential work plan items, and prioritize them all together before making this decision. Please vote no on this, and add it to the list to be considered when you update the entire work. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Lisa Warren, followed by Vina Sanco Naranyan. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you, Peggy, for bringing up all those other reasons. And I was at the meeting when Juan, the resident, gave a very detailed presentation about the issue, and he also attended the next day. This was June 6 meeting, and on June 7, the mayor had her chat at Panera in the afternoon, and he was there, and the mayor said she would talk to him offline, I believe. So, I'm not sympathetic, it's not that I'm not sympathetic to the issue that Juan and Emily and others may have with this specific area. I am. However, I feel like, you know, two years ago, I was not heard by the mayor when she was then city council. I, the planning commissioners in the past have heard and want to fix the balconies and the privacy screening. I set up a meeting to talk to Director Fu and Luke Connolly. Unfortunately, Director Fu did not show up at the meeting, but I did speak to Luke Connolly at length and gave him reasons, and I, you know, it just isn't a good, it's not a good visual to have this come up at this time. And unfortunately, for Juan, and I'm sorry, Juan, I don't know your last name, he did a great job, I am sympathetic to the problem, but this once again feels like this council and this staff is a little out of whack with what the residents have been asking for repeatedly, 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 and get nowhere. And it's important, and it's more and more important as housing laws are passed and people take a, people submit projects that match those bills, and it will be worse for noise pollution as well. It should be on that list, but it shouldn't be treated differently than the others. And to me, it is. So I would ask that you really reconsider why this was on the agenda, and any staff time was used to get it there, when the excuse is always, we don't have staff time to do what we need to do, or all we need to do, which I understand, but it's a little sideways. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you very much. I'm going to close the public comments and thank for all the speakers. So I'll bring back for council discussion.
Thudamayar, if I may, I was corrected, Councilmember Moore showed the sign ordinance did not make it onto the work program.
So, actually, because I brought this up, so I am willing to say, if I don't have support from the council, we will wait until next year when we redo our work plans and propose again and see if it will make to the work plan. So I, this is not to say yes or no, just we need a direction, give direction to staff to proceed or not to proceed with analysis. So if there is no motion to proceed, then go ahead, Councilmember Chow.
Yeah, I think we have quite a list of quality of life, issues affecting quality of life, and requiring us to strengthen our code to either clarify or enhancing the existing code, like the many mentioned here. I wonder if we can add this to the TBD list, and then I think the city manager last time brought the TBD list to the council, so that we have, can see all the list, and then we decide, so that this is not forgotten. And then that's one possibility, I wonder if that's possible. Then another question is, I understand there is sometimes an ordinance, you can change a lot, or maybe it's just changing very minimal. If we make a very minimal change to just the threshold, how much work would that be?
I think today is the, for council direction, whether you want the staff to do that analysis or not.
I would like some feedback on how much work, if we are maybe lowering the threshold by 10%, say, how, what kind of work will be involved?
Thudamayar, if I may, the honest answer is, I don't know. I really don't know how much work it will involve without giving into a solid analysis.
May I ask a question? If we do ask you to do analysis, how long would that take the staff time? Oh, I know it's a tough question too, but it will, if we say we would like to know, proceed with the necessary analysis, and how much would staff time take to do any work plan, how long would that take?
I would ask for more direction from council in terms of what would you like to see being amended in the current noise ordinance? Is it to lower the threshold, or is it to have a buffer, or is it to have more mitigation imposed by the commercial property? There's maybe a variety of different alternative that we can look into, and potentially looking into other neighboring cities ordinance, and then potentially the county noise ordinance as well. Keep in mind that, as I mentioned, this is a common occurrence when you have a residential property abutting against a commercial property on a busy commercial corridor. So again, the honest answer to that is, I don't know.
This looks like a real work plan for me now. Okay, Councilmember Moore, and followed by Vice Mayor Mohan, please.
Okay, thank you. I think it would be my preference if we could put this as a future agenda item, and then we could have some discussion regarding also the sign ordinance. We're seeing some new varieties of signs showing up, and the balconies, as someone mentioned from the public, that's true. Back when I was on planning commission, we were looking at the balconies and wanting to have that get onto the council agenda, we're still wanting to see it. So if we could do that, I think it might be a solution for this.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
The city work program was arrived at after a lot of discussion and negotiation, so I'd hate for that to be changed. So I realize the value of the amending the noise ordinance, but I'm wondering if we could just leave the city work program exactly as it is, and then we look at, you know, future options to study the noise ordinance. I had asked the staff a question earlier, and I did get a response. I said, is this something that the businesses could negotiate with the owner? And I think the answer from staff was that they had tried various options and nothing was feasible.
That is correct.
Okay, so I think my conclusion, at least from my point of view, is, we're not going to look at this right now, but maybe next year when we look at our work programs, we can propose the balcony, the noise ordinance, and other things, and prioritize it at that time. Is that, can I get a straw vote? Is that okay with Councilmember Moore? Then there's not going to be a motion or anything, just we're going to.
Correct.
Okay, Vice Mayor Mohan? Okay, Councilmember Chow?
I just, I just want to be, to have a bit assurance that the future agenda item list to be considered next year will include this noise ordinance, balcony regulations, sign ordinance, including lighting the signs, and lighting and privacy screening.
I was proposing to be work planned, and we can decide on priorities at that time.
Can I get a second to add this to the future agenda item, so at least we are sure it's on the list to be considered? Not that it will be scheduled, so that we don't forget them, because people keep bringing them up, and if it's not on the list, they feel frustrated.
So are we going to put a future agenda item or on a work plan?
Not a work program. Future agenda item is so that we don't forget them when we reconsider work program next year.
Yeah, I guess my only question or concern here is, what would we hope to accomplish at the future meeting where we would discuss these items that are on the TBD list?
So we will prioritize at that time for next year's work program and then decide.
So I'd like to bring back.
And the staff may then provide estimations then.
I'd like to bring back just to this item, that are we going to do this or not? I think the others, we can do future agenda items in the end, because this item is, are we going to proceed or not proceed with the necessary analysis regarding noise ordinance? What I'm trying to straw poll is, we're not going to proceed until the next year's work plan. And if that straw vote is okay with everybody, then this item is closed. So thank you for our discussion. So we, thank you so much for waiting. We are going to Item Number 13, but the council has been met since 6 o'clock. We're going to take a five-minute break, and we will come back. So thank you for your patience.